Okay, welcome everybody. This is the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners meeting June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'll call the meeting to order at five oh two P M. Public participation is offered by webinar. You can go, you may join the webinar by going to MBDwater.org, downloading the meeting agenda for today's meeting or any other subsequent meeting, which has the Zoom links and the phone numbers that you can call in. As courtesy, Merrimack TV is also recording the meeting and it will be posted on their website at a later date. And typically runs on cable channel twenty as well. So at this point, we'll go through, we got a quorum of the board in the room. Aaron Clement to my left, Wolf Von Sean to my right. And we'll just do a we'll have the other commissioners just tell us where they're calling in from on Zoom. Ken, where are you calling from?
From my home on Nineteenth Stakes Lane, Merrimack.
Great. And John?
Twenty-five Windsor Drive.
Great. All right. At this time, I'll ask everyone to rise and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, Republic of America, to stand as one nation under our own individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. So the first thing on the agenda is our analysis of revenue and expenditures. And that's with Kristen Maher, Finance and Human Resources.
Welcome, everybody. So let's say we've got one more month left of this fiscal year. And currently, as of the beginning of June to the end of May, we're currently running at a hundred and six percent of the budget for revenue and about ninety percent of the budget for expenses. Market cost margins and our better industry interest rates at TD Bank account for the majority of that higher revenue. We also have many new communities finish their construction this year, which has caused our entrance fees and merchandise sales to be a lot higher than normal. Questions on the summary?
Any questions, anybody? All right.
If you go to our new report, the trust fund activities or capital reserve balances. After, there are still a few outstanding capital purchases that you did approve for us to use. We will be running at about five point six million of the five trust funds. As I had mentioned last month, keep that in mind as we think about warrant articles for next year and refunding those.
I did have
replenish.
That's better word, yes.
I just had a question on, on the second page of this.
Financials?
Yeah, the first, the first part that
Yeah.
covered. I see that we have a, the mercantile numbers are coming in higher, which is good. And it was due to comparing against the prior years when COVID was in existence, right?
I think our three-year comparison, although we did try to take COVID into effect, I think we underbudgeted.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask is, is how many years back?
We look at, try to look at the last three.
Okay.
But the last, the first of that last three
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
was kind of useless in terms of truly effective revenue. So we went back five to try to kind of figure it out.
Right. Okay. And then the, the interest income is very much higher, which is very nice to see.
Yes.
And it's just astonishing at sixty-three thousand versus what we had budgeted at three thousand and it is that really just from better rates that were negotiated?
So initially, we did straight on all of the accounts as a lump sum, whereas we negotiated where they're looking at each account separately and, and the balance that we've all put them in.
Oh. So kind of combining everything made them give us a better rate. Good. Well, whoever did that negotiation, good job. That's a, that's a big jump to see.
That was a nice jump.
I have a quick question. The truck purchases, is that done deal? Are they, are they here?
We have done two purchases. I know we're looking into sort of six, a third and maybe some six-wheelers.
Six wheels, like a dump truck?
Yes.
Okay.
Nineteen eighty-five, I believe, eighty-five, eighty-nine.
Okay. And they all came in as planned. That vote that we did like three months ago or something, we voted, or two months ago, we voted on those that, that all came in within.
See those and actually the who walks us in and all that, they're all
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, anyone?
Nope, good.
All right, just one other thing I have here online. Is that six oh six five zero PFAS filtration PFAS? That one fifty-seven four thirty amount.
I'm sorry, what was the number again?
Six oh six five zero.
So
Well, it says media four, five and seven and eight change out.
Correct.
Did we pay for the change out of seven and eight? I thought it hadn't been changed yet.
That is the, the other half, that's not hit yet.
Oh, all right. So that's okay.
So there will still be more, because this is as of May. These seven and eight is included with the change.
I asked Kristen to hold on to the last check to go to them to like at least get a date on when we can, yeah. Get the change out schedule, so.
And they know that? That has been communicated to them?
That part, no, but I've been in communication with them as far as you know, we need to get the profile back and all that, so we've been.
So it's important to put them on notice, right? Because otherwise, if we're just not paying, they can actually done us, right? So I would definitely put them on notice and writing that we're not paying them for a reason, right? In writing, otherwise we can incur charges and stuff like that.
And then for the forty-five at the end of the year, you'll take money from the
server accounts.
maintenance that we get to take up extra money for the forty-five.
Okay.
And the other on expenses?
I don't have anything, anybody else?
Anything on the trust funds?
I'm good.
Yeah, I think I'm okay on all that too.
Now for next meeting, and this is just an inquiry. Want to see real preliminary June? Or do you want to wait for August or September for, for better numbers?
I mean, I think I'd like to see what we typically see and if it has to be
That's fine.
updated later, I don't know. Yeah.
Okay.
This is a reason not to, I know it might not be fully, but all right. Good. Anything else for Kristen? I'm good with everything. All right. Is there, since you're here, is there anything else that you want?
There are a few, but I'm gonna scatter throughout the rest of it.
Okay.
Most of the meeting.
Right. All right. So I guess the next on the agenda is the, the draft rate adjustment for two thousand and twenty-three. Actually, for twenty, yeah, for the next fiscal year. And we got okay, good. We got Keith too and Megan from Underwood, is that right?
We're both here.
Good. All right, you have the floor, Keith, if you have anything you want to
Yeah, I mean, I'll just give you a quick overview. I think most of you knew this was coming, but your staff worked with Megan just to do some double checks on current expenses and, and tracking them as it relates to what we need for I guess what we considered the, the last of the, the rate adjustments to sort of support the PFAS projects as well as ongoing budget adjustments. So there's a letter that Megan sent out. It was originally sent out draft about a, a month ago, it was updated last week as a result of our work session. So the letter we're looking at is June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, that's in front of you. I, I believe it's in your packet. And it summarizes the assumptions in the model update we did. It was just a brief model update. I think we just looked at F Y two thousand and twenty-four so that we would know what you'd need for a rate increase this, this period. And so the assumptions are stated on the front, budget increases and, and consumption that are in the model. Don't know that there's any too big unusual or surprises there. On the top of page two, some of the reasonings or some of the major items that are driving this less, this rate increase are some of the line items that we noted, including chemical costs that refinanced PFAS loan. The Pennachuck arrangement, temporary arrangement and some targeted unassigned fund balances. And as a result, yeah.
Can you just explain those to the one million transfer assigned fund balance to the trust fund and then the unassigned fund balance minimum of two million? What? What exactly do those represent?
I'll start, I'll start on the last one. I may need help on the second to last one from Megan and, and she'll correct me if I state it wrong. But in the model, we're assuming certain balances in the, in the, in the fund. So that we, after, if we project a year or two or a year or three out, we're trying to maintain a minimum balance. And as a result, it might mean a surplus one year and sometimes it might be we, we pull things out if there's, if there's an excess in those accounts on paper. And what we did in this last model is we set a target number of two million to be the unassigned fund balance. And as a result, we either had to feed it or, or reduce that. And so that impacts rates. And I think in this case, Megan nod if I got it right, but I think we had to adjust it upward a little bit to get it to two million or was it a decrease? Do you remember?
I believe we had to adjust up a bit to to get to where we needed to be. But yeah, so that was in talking with Kristen, as Keith said, the two million, that's approximately thirty-three percent of the operating budget. And then
The other side of our policy that will hopefully pass for when at the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, we, we would have thirty-two percent of our budget, if that's the number. I went low with them. I know we originally talked thirty-three percent up to fifty percent of an operating budget and get it to more detail a little later. But I gave her thirty-three percent to work with along with one million to replenish the trust funds.
Now, are those consistent with the past or those need to be updated as we have more expenses to pay at all or how, how, I don't?
The trust funds you guys used to put a significant amount in annually and it's come down. And then the fund balance itself is brand new in terms of it still will be considered unassigned if you don't have it. Then we have a policy and how do we get back to it? But again, we'll go over in more detail. But I gave her those to, because that's who we want to move forward with our rates to have these established to be financially, financially sound for us.
Yeah, I was just curious if this is more than we've done in the past, is how much is that driving the actual rate increase?
Probably in the last five years, it's more, but previous, you guys were doing five hundred thousand up to seven hundred and fifty thousand on an annual basis. It's come down significantly. We've had so many projects you guys who want to raise the rates and I totally understand that.
Yeah.
But if we want to maintain these three plants, we want to make sure that we have the income if anything goes wrong, that we can correct them.
I do think also, if I recall right, some of these discussions we had like two, three years ago, right? So for one, I know that one of the rate increases about two years ago, we actually went a little bit steeper than planned because we wanted to have a little bit of, you know, we wanted to level it out of all the tier, this year actually, and, and with, with all the finished projects, right? We didn't want to have that big whammy coming in of like a fifty, sixty percent increase, right? The other thing is, I think, I remember that we added a lot of budget line items that we didn't have in the past and we're now we're now creating reserves ahead of times, right? We're, 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 we're basically budgeting better throughout the year for some of those maintenance items that were in the past pulled out of the
Right, you'd be more prepared
reserves, right?
preventative than break fix.
Right. And, and again, that's how it should be, right? Because those are predictable costs that should go in the operating budget. They shouldn't go into the reserve and just be, you know, siphoned off of the reserves. So I think we changed some of our manners, how we, how we budget and how we, we don't have that need anymore, I think, as we used to have.
As long as we maintain that those items that we stay
Right.
mentality and preventative, then absolutely, then the trust funds don't need to be as much, but we also have yes, they're brand new, but we need to start accounting for when they got stuck in mode.
Sure.
So this is Ken, I, I'm just curious, how much money do we have right now?
In the equipment, trust funds. We will have just shy of two point nine million.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Just shy of two point nine million after our purchases that we were approved for.
And you, and you guys want to have setup to have an average of two million in reserve? Is that what you're asking?
Two, two million is roughly thirty-three percent of our six million budget.
And that's the, on, yeah, that's the unexpendive.
So again, I went low with that number to that I didn't, we're not stacking them up the fifty-six percent like you said. Depending on how we go with the fund reserve policy, we can start with one number and eventually increase it if, you know, as all of these projects calm down.
And, and if you want a little bit of a benchmark, it's often a question we're asked with all the rate work we do with, at the state, how, what should our unexpended fund balance be? And we usually suggest three to six months. And right now, you're in between that, you're sort of in, right in the middle of that. So yeah, four months. So a, a good target, you know, for most systems is six months, you know, you're a little bigger than most systems. So, you know, you got a six million dollar budget. But you're right, we think you're right where you should be at least. I wouldn't go any less really, but you probably don't have to go too, too much more, but it, but that's, that's where we, why we landed on that for this year anyway.
All right. I, I just didn't know if we were increasing that substantially and that was being a driver of the rate, but it sounds like it's the other way around. We're actually a little less than we were.
You're maybe less than you would be even if it went up a bit. But here's a couple of the things that might help you. Three years ago, four years ago, when we projected the rates for all this, we were estimating about seventy-nine percent, as Will said, we did it in increments to make sure it wasn't a big hit at the end of the day. This, this rate increase is right there. We're right about, if you add them all up about eighty percent, I think it's seventy-nine or eighty percent is roughly where we're at. So the estimates back then were pretty good. Even though certain line items went up, some things cost more, we actually got more grants, so it offset. So, you know, in the mix, it looks different, but at the end of the day, we, we sort of landed where we thought we would. And then the other thing that's attached to this is, is where you sort of fall in the state world and, and Megan attached some, attached some sample bills. And the average user in, in the state is still projected to be right around with the state averages. So the average user in Merrimack, the average residential user in Merrimack is right about where the state average is. And that state average is based on a two-year-old number. So you may still actually be lower than the state average.
Would that, I'm sorry, would that be like a tier one customer or a tier two or?
So if you, I don't know if you have that in front of you, Ken, but it's the third page in the PDF. It actually shows you what the impacts are for a low user and a high user. So to answer your question, the average user is really a tier one in Merrimack. And that, and that's probably lands on an average, but if you go to a high user, somebody who maybe irrigates a lot, they'd be above the state average. So, so I think, and that's good, I think, because that's what we're trying to do. And that's the last thing I, I, I just wanted to summarize here. And the reason this memo was updated from last month from the work session, we all agreed to adjust the tier differential. And originally, the tier differential only had a ten percent difference between tier one and tier two. So Megan calculated the impact here to generate the same revenue and, and increase the differential to twenty-five percent. And so that's what we are recommending. So you're, you're generating the same revenue with this rate increase, but we're increasing the tier. So high-end users, irrigation users are going to see a bigger hit than your low-end users and your average users as a result of this rate increase.
Right.
Yeah.
So under the central water bill, so looking here, it's a tier two right now is three dollars and sixty-nine cents, no, excuse me, three dollars and forty-five cents and we'll go up to four dollars and sixty-one cents, right?
Is that That's right. That's right. So the difference between tier one and tier two, three fourteen to three forty-five right now, that's only ten percent difference. But if you go to three sixty-nine and four sixty-one, it's a twenty-five percent differential. So that's why you see a high-end user down here, four hundred gallons a day on average is, is, would be seeing a bill of a thousand dollars. Whereas an average user in town of about two hundred gallons, half that would be seeing about six hundred dollars.
I, I have two comments. The one is just a general comment that as far as the reserves go, we have a lot of irons in the fire with litigation.
Yes.
So we have to keep that in mind as well. And I'm not banking on it.
Yeah.
But I think we should also keep in mind that there is a potential that we are seeing some money coming our way that is unexpected, right? And we don't know when, but it's also not going to be twenty years, right? So
Right.
I guess what I'm saying is, I for one personally, I'm not just speaking for me as, as a suggestion maybe for the board, is I would be I wanted to see a little bit more how, how some of these things are going, right? There's some grants that are coming down the line, some federal money that is still being discussed about PFAS remediation. There's some, some, I'm sorry, legislation coming down the line as far as PFAS limits, right? Specifically for some of the traditional ones getting much lower and one would hope that there's some financial support coming from the federal government as well. So in that all being said, I personally would like to be careful to not go too steep into increasing the reserves. I think we have an easy year or two where the equipment is pretty new. All the early failures should be falling out, right? They should, they should be happening, hopefully on the warranty. Usually then you have a couple of years where it's pretty smooth sailing, right? And that's, and then that's when the wear kicks in. So I personally would like to be careful the next two years easily with increase in the reserves as a general statement, right? The other thing is, we had talked some other time about the hydrant fees and how they've been really going up over the last, you know, couple of years and seeing I'm not sure if I see the impact of how many hydrants do we have in town? Nine hundred, nine hundred and probably surrounding ten, fifteen properties are benefiting of it, right? Or paying for it twenty, I don't know. I'm just not sure, I'm not sure if the hydrant fees, you know, if, if we shouldn't put us put the brake on those and keep them steady and rather look at the consumption rates to, to compensate for, for any missing increases, right? Or for any missing budgets that's, that's coming from that decision. Can, can, can we run that, you know, easily to keep the hydrant fees where they at right now and not increasing those?
And we can, if you want to make some changes in the model, it's easy for us to change the assumptions, like keep the hydrant fees flat or or, you know, drop the unaccount, unassigned fund balance a little bit to see what the rate impacts are. I mean, it's ea, it's easy to do if that's what you wanted to. I'm right, Megan, we, it's pretty straightforward for us to do it because she's doing it.
Yeah, no, that's pretty straightforward.
Okay, boss.
Yeah, I, I had to qualify it to make sure it was okay with Megan, but yeah.
It's
So what is our budgeted annual revenue from the hydrant fees?
Do you have that? You probably
Kristen should have it.
Yeah, I should have it too, if you can just give me a second.
This current year, it was nine hundred and forty thousand.
Nine hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, that's pretty close to what we project.
Bottom six of our budget.
Twenty percent.
Right, so twenty percent, that's more than I thought actually, to be honest. Okay. It would be, I, I would like to see what impact that has.
May, maybe not keeping it level, but maybe not the full seventeen and a half percent that, that's shown here.
Yep.
I thought the same thing actually, that, you know, those are, those numbers have been going up quite a bit. That's some people aren't even M B D customers and they're paying that hydrant bill because there's a hydrant in their vicinity. Yeah, and I'm, I'm kind of thinking I think it's a lot on the, the higher tier two user to go from ten to twenty-five. I'm wondering if we go from ten to twenty percent, how much of a difference that would make on the, on the tier two higher water rate that we're talking about here? You know, I just don't know where, how much that's going to shortchange us on the meeting or budget.
Well, it, it, we would still set the rates to establish the revenue you need, it would just put more of it back on the tier one users. So if you take it away from the tier two users, we'd be putting it on the tier one users.
Right, so the seven, seventeen point five percent would go up.
Up a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the chairs was created to suggest conservation, right?
Right, yeah.
Well, basically what this means is that some people might get the idea of building an irrigation well, well, right?
Or paying a little more attention to what they're using. I mean, it's, they're gonna see it.
I've, I've seen people that have been actually considering drilling a well just for irrigation purposes.
Yeah, that definitely happens when the, when the OSBR, the higher tiers goes up significantly, sure. But I think once you find the cost of a new well and connection and flatter tank and control and you know, you could be fifteen thousand dollars into it and the payback on that might be many years. But yeah, so what, what do you want to see about numbers for leaving the, the hydrant fees fixed or maybe just having a more modest increase? What do you which, which way, which direction do you think you want to give them?
What are you saying?
So right now it's seventeen and a half on the hydrant, right?
And the hydrant fee doesn't really bother me that much. I mean, it's like an eighteen dollar increase. If you look at every other utility that's increased in your life in the past year or two. I mean, it's only eighteen dollars. I mean, in quarterly, you're, you know, what the, and now the bills are going to be monthly. So it's going to be dollars.
Yeah.
You know, the bills go to monthly, if you're paying a hydrant fee.
What's six dollars it's gonna be?
Yeah, you're, it's like less than ten dollars every time. So I feel like it's the only eight dollar bill you're gonna get.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, for the kind of money it is on the budget.
Those of the caller that asked about why they're getting a higher charge, we explained to them that they also get a break on our homeowners insurance for being in the house.
Correct.
John, you had a question?
Yeah, question for Keith, the, the six hundred and a thousand dollar examples you were using, what time period do you think that would be for?
That was an annual bill, annual cost.
Okay.
Is that, was that your question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you take that thousand dollars and divide it by twelve months because we're going to monthly billing.
They're saying we should check up the hydrant fee more and
No, I think, I think what they're doing, just doing it across No, I think, I think what they're doing, just doing it across the board is. Is, no, it shouldn't be fair, should be the way to do it.
You got a point.
I don't think six hundred, a thousand bucks a year is overly, um, burdensome for our consumers.
I mean, if you look.
And that's on the higher users.
That's a higher user. So I mean, they're, if a thousand dollars a year, they're paying less than a hundred bucks a month on water.
And that's, and that higher user is twice, twice the average user.
I, I mean, I have a family of four. And I looked at these and looked at the amounts per year and I was like, wow, I don't use very much water at all.
Yeah, so I'm agreeing with you guys. I'm saying it's not burdensome to them, but I don't think it's out of line.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, going with what Wolf was stating earlier. If we do have money, say, you know, we get money come in from the federal government and all that. And then at a certain point, well, maybe there's a year we don't have to do a rate increase down the road.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking ahead, I mean, we're, we're spending what, three hundred thousand dollars to buy water from Penetuck that we don't really want to be doing. So if we get money on these things, that's a great time to have that kind of capital to put into. The other projects that we want to do or, you know, looking at the land that we could be using for the artificial recharge and stuff like that. And that would be a long-term investment that, you know, then it's our land and that kind of stuff. Rather not, not put the money where we need it and bank on somebody else getting, you know, that we're going to get the money. I think that's, I'd rather put that kind of money into capital improvements when it shows up.
In the interest of, uh, time and based on this really well-done preparation, I'll move. To, um, how do I word that? I'll move to, uh. Yeah, increase the meter hydrant and sprinkle charges as proposed in. The Underwood Engineering Letter dated June fifteen. Based on option two.
I will second.
And we need a date for, what date do we do?
We're going to have, this was just a discussion, so we're actually going to have a public hearing.
Right, right.
Okay.
But in, in preparation of that public meeting, I guess we need a vote that we want to do something, how we want to do it, right? So.
I believe you guys set up for October.
It's October. Right.
July. August.
That's enough time for the hearings.
So how many hearings, two of them, right?
Yeah, they need to be at least.
July.
A week apart or? Two weeks apart, so we're in good shape. No, it's through October, right? Oh, yeah, yeah. So again, so, um, I would, you know, affect, I would say effective October twenty twenty three.
Yeah, so just basically agree to proceed with this as recommended.
Yeah. And option two, right, because they offer two options.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you need any language in the motion for, you know, pre- preparing the hearings and everything or. Right, okay.
All right, so if we want to make an official motion by Wolf, uh, second by Aaron. Any other questions from any other commissioners on moving forward with, uh, option two, what's in front of us right now? All right, if not, then all those.
Actually have one. Sorry, uh, I thought, hey, it went, uh, look, showed John, so I thought John was going to say something. I think, uh, it'd be kind of, you know, maybe on the website, uh, with this. And maybe it's kind of explain some of the major projects that we do, do have coming up. Like, you know, replacing, uh, piping and, you know, updating the infrastructure. So people have it a better understanding why we're doing it.
Recommendations on the website.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, that breakdown in the different tiers and the different scenarios, I think it's also helpful.
All right, so ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And, uh, John, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Ken?
Yes.
All right, so that's five zero zero, nobody abstaining, no oppositions. Um, yeah, so as far as the public hearings, we need to. Can we do them at our regular meetings in July and August?
Just leave it open for public comment.
Yeah, that's why I think when we're all here gathered together, we'll be able to do that.
The public hearing would be. July, and we could actually vote in August.
Okay. All right.
And we don't need that, um. Middle school, high school, public hearing, right? It can be right here, it's part of our regular meeting.
Yeah, significant, uh, yeah.
It's just. The only reason we have there is the possibility of a lot more people attending.
I, yeah, I mean.
They're waiting for that stampede.
I think we've had the February hearing here, right? Because of weather conditions, not on that date, but it would still, there was not this massive crowd that turned out, I guess is what I'm saying. Right. It's not that. All right, okay, I think we're good on that.
I don't know that we had anything else on, on for us, so, uh, I don't believe.
Uh, is there any action items that, um? It was something else from here.
What about item five, the watershed planning project? That's scary.
Right. Uh, I'm just going to look through the action items real quick, see if there's anything for Underwood on here. I think a couple of them, we've already covered in our last, um, work session. In, um, was it last Monday, right?
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago.
Yeah. Uh, so just see what. Yeah, I guess those are the only things I see Underwood listed as the, um, be a signee. So I think, I think we're clear on those two.
Yeah, and I think there was a couple of action items that came out of the work session that we'll, we'll be working on. So, um, just to help with tracking and things that came out of that, but, um.
So do you remember what that, what those were? I mean, should, should we keep these action items open until those are kind of rectified?
I, it may, it may just be that we're, we're, yeah, it was more about can we set up your GIS system to track what we want to track? Or do we have to help do a little, do a little bit more work to get a system set up? So Margaret's been in contact with Brian to work that through. If you want to keep it open, just to check in or close the loop, I'm, I'm sure, uh, that'd be fine. Um, so it's not forgotten about, but that was one of them on that, that meeting.
I think that was more related to, uh, like tracking the erosion control and chlorine complaints and things.
Yeah, any, anything that sort of came in as a phone call into the office that they just had a system for tracking.
All right, and were we all set on the SDC calculation metrics?
Um, I had made a note to double check on the asset value at our next rate update, which, you know, Wolf brought up. Um, so that, um, I think that was one we're going to want to just look at. I think the basis, our feeling is, is we're okay, the methodology is okay, but we just got to make sure the input numbers are right. Again, so that would be another check at the next, next update.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll leave these on and we'll just close them out later once we hear more feedback on those, those items then.
Yeah, and if you want to narrow the SDC one, I would just narrow it to update, you know, the input values. So we don't forget what, what it was, but that, that would be helpful because I think that was the, that's what we came out of with the work session.
All right, uh, so Amanda, I don't know if you caught that, but maybe number forty seven is what Keith was referring to. Um, just to put a note in there to update the asset value. In the calculation metrics for number forty seven action item.
Okay, do you want to change the note at the bottom?
Uh, yeah, we don't, yeah, I, I don't think we need, um, forty seven or forty nine. To really any target, we could just pick those up at a subsequent meeting or something, right, Keith?
Yep, yep.
You think, you think you want to change that to July, just to say at the July meeting or something, the next meeting?
Um, if you don't mind, give us a little bit more time. I think we have to, we have to talk about how to do that. What, right now, if you remember, we take that number right out of your financial reports. So it's a number that your accountant is establishing, that's why it's an easy number to use. If, if we want to change it, which it's got merit to look at it, it's, it's a little bit more work and we may just need to set up an ESR. So I, I don't know if it's a nine one one or a real high priority, I just think it's something we want to look at.
All right.
Uh, so it, so maybe some more time would be reasonable. You just, you know, I, your revenue is going to come in from the rate adjustments, that's where your revenue is, you know. So what you just, what you just did.
So would, would you feel better if it was August, September?
Um.
It's just a target, I mean, it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I think we come back in August or September, maybe not with it done. Um, but with a, an approach, here's what we think you can do to, to take a look at this, that's.
We'll just say, it just says here, uh, basically to be discussed.
Yeah.
We'll say in August, at the August, um, Board of Commissioners meeting, we don't need another work session on that.
No, I don't think so. Nope, that sounds good, I'll write down August as well.
All right. You good with that, Amanda?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I guess if that's it, uh, nobody else has any other questions on this for Underwood, we could probably let them off the, uh, the hook.
Okay. All right, thanks guys, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
All right, um, so the next item is the, uh, investment policy, annual review of the investment policy. And Kristen, you on that one?
It's this, it's your, the policy that we sign each year, renting.
Okay.
The admissions on.
Yeah, I guess that was, I guess that was a question, is, is there anything different in here?
It was reviewed a couple of years ago and revised a few years ago, so this is the newest one.
All right, that was, I mean, that was, I didn't know if there was something different that you wanted to explain why the changes are, but, um. If there's nothing different in here, then I guess we'll just ask anyone if they have any questions on anything in here that they want clarified. And if not, I guess we can just take a vote to reapprove it. Um, reasonable.
So moved.
Second in, that was my question for the record.
Me too. All right, uh, so motion by Wolf, second by Aaron to reapprove the investment policy. Uh, which is going to have a new effective date of July first, twenty twenty three. Um. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. John, can you, uh, tell us how you vote on that one?
Aye.
And Ken?
Yes.
All right, that's five zero zero again, no oppositions, no abstentions. Uh, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda, the, uh, review of the request from T-Mobile for a change in base rent. And growth rate in their cell-powered lease.
I move to deny that request. Keep it consistent with the Verizon request.
I, I, I was confused at the beginning, but I really liked that that was put with the, um, thank you for the backup.
To keep, just to keep discussion quick here, I see no reason to, to change the thinking. Uh, I think their suggestion was a little bit better than the one from, from Verizon, to be honest. But it's not enough money for me personally to be concerned about this if we have it or lose it. Because you guys have efforts with it too, right? I mean, you know, just administrative effort and, and, and everything, it's not that much money that I'm worried about it. Well, yeah, but still, I mean, physically, right, there's still stuff in your way at times, right? Stuff you need to look at, you know, you need to not trip over, right? And, uh, all the equipment that's on site, I'm not worried about it one bit. I mean, when I say I'm not worried about it, I don't want to support this.
I wasn't in favor of either, but it was more of on the line. Would probably never see that decrease in your T-Mobile bill in the first place, so. For our customers, everything. If they, you know, we're getting revenue this way and. And that likely not to see a decrease in their bill, so.
I mean, they're, um, you know, they're mentioning in here, after assessing newly expanded portfolio. We found two nearby alternative locations meeting our network and cost structure needs that must be considered. Sort of like, if you guys don't approve this, we may walk away or listen to else, but. I mean, the positive setting up all that new infrastructure has to be factored in as well and. So, you know, I was looking at this saying some rent is better than nothing, but.
But on rent goes up everywhere, so why are we, I mean.
Yeah, and just for the.
They want five hundred bucks a month.
Just for the viewing audience, the number that they're talking about, that, that they're asking for a reduction in the monthly rent from eighteen seventy. Down to thirteen seventy per month. So if, if they're actually for a reduction in rent, you know, everything else in this world is going up. So I don't see why.
Right.
They would want to do.
Just for that, while we're also working on another lease agreement right now with, uh, EverSource. For one of our other powers that is actually. As well.
EverSource or Verizon?
EverSource.
EverSource?
Yeah, for, uh, but it's in their reading software, they, like, even stick. It was a remote read type thing, I believe that's what it was.
Now, did Verizon ever get back? Just on a different subject, but a different company, we denied Verizon's request last time, right? Did they ever counter offer and get back or anything?
Yes.
And, um, I noticed this T-Mobile letter is dated December second of last year. Did it, did it come later or it just took six months to get it on the?
Just got it, and I, I talked to him, I believe it never got sent or something.
Oh, really?
It was lost in the, yeah.
And this lease runs out, what is it saying here? I don't know if it says, that said. Uh, just curious how, how, what the, you know, what does our lease agreement, when does it expire?
At a later date.
All right.
From my standpoint, it doesn't make a difference with the motion, I see no reason, as a small water district, to give a giant like T-Mobile five hundred bucks a month, done. So, motion to deny that request.
Second in.
All right, so motion by Wolf, second by Aaron to deny the request. Um, any other, uh, discussion on this by anyone else, John or Ken? If not, we can go ahead and vote. Seeing none, um, all those in favor for the denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, John, how do you vote?
I vote aye, and thank you Wolf for trying to fast track this thing.
Sure.
And Ken?
Aye.
All right, so that's five zero zero in favor of the denial, no oppositions, no extensions. Um, next on the agenda, Board of Commissioners to vote on a twenty thousand dollar increase to the watershed planning project for additional required work. I did.
Oh, we did, I wonder why they were out of order.
Oh, oh.
I thought they were, I was like, they're weird, they're out of order.
Let's try and get John out of here faster. Just kidding. I'm sorry, number three, the, uh, proposed changes to the paid time off policies.
Also, we're on a sequence, that's why.
That, that's what you're here for. Right. All right.
We've had some pretty detailed discussion on our paid time off. And we had discussed doing accruals for quarterly, doing them monthly. And I had discussed with Ron and Jill that actually the easiest way to solve. This in terms of our potentially paying out someone who hasn't earned the time is rewriting the employee handbook for a time off. So I've been giving you both the original for vacation minutes, the suggested. And the original for sick. Original and suggested, and then an additional personal time. Um, we've always used personal time internally in terms of what, that's what we called it. But in the handbook, it's considered special vacation. So it's more determining that it's truly personal time. And that there is a potential of three days or two days depending on what business falls for our year, it's the way that the handbook is written. Um, writing the, adding the fact of when you start and when you leave is provided.
Pretty, uh, level across the board then, right?
Correct, so that you do not, if someone left us in January, which is when we start our paid time off schedule again. They're not because we do front loaded, they're not leaving within a full year of vacation.
Isn't that really cumbersome from a financial standpoint to not have that? Accrual. Starting with the fiscal year. Cause now you have carryovers at the end of the fiscal year and then also carryovers at the, no? Okay, no, 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 that's my company.
Um. The proration before, and 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 again, we had also discussed that. This was an issue because we had turnover. In the last few years, where I think we are. Better suited where we, we may put this in place, we'll never have to use it, which would be wonderful. But I think this is the easiest way. To deal with. The having to pay out is just by adding the words proration for starting version for ending for all. Of our paid time off that we do split season vacation, second. So. I don't know if you had a chance to read the originals versus my suggestion. Um.
Why, why not merge the personal time off into vacation time?
It is a vacation time. Everybody gets two, three days and you start. It's not, um.
Does it accrue?
Sorry, user list.
Well, vacation time accumulates too? No, no, sick, personal time and sick.
Saying you get, or like if you get five years, you get another week, get, get, um.
Oh, in person.
Yeah, but the personal time doesn't. Yeah, but.
Two to three days per year.
Right, which means we could tack it on for the, on the initial level, you know, or just tack it on to each level. And. I'm just saying, it it seems cumbersome. It seems like complex and all of that needs tracked, it needs to be validated.
The different kind.
Oh.
Um. And as I said, it was really. We all used it internally, you don't take a personal day, but like the weird lesson.
Oh.
So, I mean, the only, uh, question I had is, um. That one new paragraph that was added on the sick leave benefits. At the bottom. Upon termination of employment, employees will be paid at a prorated rate for an unused sick time. That has been earned through the last day of work. However, if MBD in its sole discretion. Terminates employment for cause forfeiture of unsick time. Unused sick time may result. It it seems like it's not real definitive. And I don't know. For cause, what would?
Yeah. But cause is a legal term in the, in the HR world.
Is it?
Yeah, it's like theft, uh, deception, violence, right? Abuse. Alcohol.
Having to spell out every one of.
Right.
Alright.
So is there, you get terminated because you did something you really, really shouldn't have done?
Yeah.
So it's not like.
What I figured.
Like performance, for example, is not cause, right? It's not with cause, and this performance issues are not necessarily with cause.
So there's a definition of cause.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, okay, because it sounded loose to me.
Yeah, no, no, it's pretty. There's a gray area with performance, right? And like, you know, like, if somebody's just like disruptive and so, then there's a little bit of a gray area.
Work with them before you.
Right.
Yes, there's gonna be like a plan in place or something, and then they have to violate the plan.
Alright, that that helps, that that makes me feel better, because it seemed loose to me, but that's fine.
You've been self-employed too long.
I have certainly been. Twenty-three years of bliss.
You need some employee, that's what you need.
What was that, Kristen?
I didn't know if you had to run each or collect it.
Uh, well, let's, let's look at the other one and see if. Is there any other questions we have on? On this one?
No.
Alright. Uh, so go ahead with the next one. If we're okay with the next one, we can do them together. If not, we'll do them in pieces.
For. So there, I I mean. Pretty much the only thing that I had added, I did take out, um. Under vacation, once an employee enters eligibility of vacation. They begin to earn the vacation time according to their schedule, and we actually needed. Um. And then the very last paragraph indications. On. Where we just pay them in lieu of if it becomes significant. Uh, what was odd, we can't take the vacation because of what's going on with. Our business. We would pay them out. I don't, have you guys ever had to do that? So I think taking it out and not setting a precedent. We ever have to, we could then have a vote. I just really put it in writing opens. Enough to paying it out for whatever reason, because they could come back out, they couldn't take it off or whatever. So I think taking it out. Leaves us to. If an extenuating circumstance happens, then you guys can vote for that. Particular circumstance, but you're gonna lose it.
Right.
So that is. Right, but that it was in there, that's why I was like, let's just take it to this. So, and then as I said, with the sick, it was just adding. Proration. Adding the facts, um, the sick did not have the fact that it's calendar, but it's a fiscal. Uh, the personal is just pretty much this worded with word personal type.
So on the four oh two personal time off that's that highlighted in yellow, which is new to propose you wanted, right?
So yellow is new and then crossed out is to take out.
So it says, um, the top of the page, four oh two personal time off, MBD grants all eligible employees. Two or three personal days per calendar year.
Mm-hmm.
It maybe you've already explained, but what distinguishes two versus three?
It's a little further down, says to determine if it's two or three years based on the Christmas holiday costs.
Okay.
So.
Good to answer your questions. Alright. Now that I see that. Any other?
For the holidays. Further in the book explains. If Christmas falls on a certain date, it can either be Monday or a day. So if Christmas falls on a Tuesday or a Thursday. We take that extra day either for the Monday or the Friday.
Alright.
So how is this gonna work if we vote to approve it tonight? Since the year already started. Was, and were employees already front loaded with vacation time for this year? And then. It'll reset, so it'll, so basically we're voting on it tonight, and if we approve it, it starts in January.
It's the next, it's one of the people that are new hires are leaving.
Okay.
So as of today, anybody that leaves as of today, this policy was approved, we'd go by this.
So they, so they, we would pro grade what they got this year.
And to make that. To know that they've done that, I can have them also resign. The different employee handbook with the petition, so that they know that this is.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions, anyone?
Nope.
So, uh, if we want to go ahead and affect this, we just gotta do a, um. Motion and a. Group motion for both of these.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes. In the employee handbook as. Presented.
Do you want to say the section numbers? Because then I'm gonna be saying that.
I did, okay, you know, some of the numbers don't match up, is I'm in the process of doing the OLEA book.
Okay.
So.
So I'll approve for the section numbers four, four. Four oh two. And four oh one?
Yes.
That's the original. I didn't want to say the pages that had suggested are the original.
Good.
Now they're all in a row, that makes sense.
As presented, right, should probably be part of the motion.
Yep.
Yep.
Presented.
As presented.
Okay, so approve, uh, four oh one, four of two and four oh four as presented, that's motion by Aaron. I hear second by anyone? Maybe I'll plan. Second by John, great. Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. John, you in favor?
Aye.
And Ken?
Yes.
Alright, so that's, uh, that passes five zero zero, no opposite, uh, oppositions or abstentions. Alright, great. And, uh, so next, I guess we can move on to the. Twenty thousand dollar increase to the watershed planning project for additional required work. Item number five. Yeah, there's some stuff in there. Uh, so the watershed planning project, it doesn't look like we've got. Uh, Jamie, so I don't know if he, um.
No, he's, he wasn't coming on, I know it. I know that you had a conversation with him.
Right. And I think that email he sent me is in here too.
So I should probably back up that we got approval. Um, go to governor and council for the eighty thousand grand, so eighty thousand dollar grant. So we need to have a certificate of authority signed again, explain this to the other grants that we do the application, set this in with it, but then when it goes to governor and council, it has to be within thirty days of signing. So we have to do that again.
Alright.
Um. Maybe sign for the grant application.
Sure.
And then along with that, um. DES has added tasks onto this project. So Jamie was asking, um, an additional twenty thousand dollars. To wrap that up, and there's now in there that kind of summarizes what Jamie stocks. Were going, um. Doing the batch. And see on the next page is our project cost by category, which. Has been updated again to the. Total cost on the box under a thousand dollars. And this. DES did a require additional tasks there, they, the budget was going to be tight as it was with eighty thousand dollar grant.
I I do have a comment on that one, I. I don't wanna. Sound like I'm suspecting shenanigans, but when I see, uh, Jamie's hours is a hundred ten hours. And then his team being at a hundred forty, hundred fifty hours each. I, I'm not sure if I've. Fully understand that, let me put it this way. Because as as a senior manager, executive of that company. I doubt that he's almost spending the same amount of on these projects as the individuals working on these projects, because he has, I'm sure. Twenty, thirty, fifty projects under his belt. So. Just maybe as a, as a side note, I think that that makes it a little bit less. I don't know. Palatable that his portion of that is so high. I just don't see him working hand in hand, you know, shoulder to shoulder with his staff every day, except almost every day. I just don't see that. So. Just because I know he's working on, on, on plenty, you know, projects. You know, it would be similar as you run, you know, spending almost the same amount in the field as your team individually. That's just not true. Right? So, but just as a side note. Stuff like that always makes me cringe a little bit when I, when I see these requests.
Yeah, I mean, that would be better if. He was able to answer that question.
Right.
I don't know how true. That. Could be or not, you know?
But I think this is the second time we're not one hundred percent in agreement with, right? We talked about this last meeting already, so I'm a little surprised he's not here to answer that. Yeah.
And I think we talked about the tasks, like. The task from DES have changed, but. Even looking at the whole, what was a hundred page document? Um, that we got. I didn't see, okay, this was the list of tasks, and this is now the list of tasks, and this is what changed. I think that's what I was looking for is, you know, what changed? And I couldn't find it.
And I think that was the question we asked last time, actually.
I was, so that's why I looked through that whole document. I was looking for, you know, the meat of really what changed. And I know we had asked for correspondence, if there was any too, and I was kind of looking for something from DES saying, hey, now we really want you to do this and this. We understand it wasn't part of the original scope or something like that.
Uh, there may be. He's referencing an email from DES. That's not here, I think.
What is the original budget on that and how much, you know? And now he's asking for twenty more.
Well, it does.
Twenty percent.
Can, um, get for grant this. And then, um, yes, Steve Landry was sending, I think, find that, um, mail chain. From Jamie. Going back and forth, I think this, um, sixteen, sixteen, one part of there. But there was Steve asking about modeling and about some other things on there.
Yeah. I remember reading it, because this is, if you look at this, it's addressed to me from Jamie. Because I asked him, I had a conversation, I told him when we discussed this last time. We were looking for more backup information of what DES added. And then this email says right in here, I've attached the latest version of the grant, um. What else does he say here, um?
That's what was on OneDrive. Yeah, that's what I looked at.
He would submit the applications, Steve Landry, and Steve would say, well, what about doing this, this, and this, and it was, um, there. But I don't know if I knew that.
That email.
I guess what. So we didn't pay those eighty, right? The eighty thousand were were a grant from.
Strands.
Right, so we have no muscle in this yet.
Right.
Ourselves, right? This would be the first time we're putting money into this. I guess what bothers me a little bit. In this whole thing, and I mentioned that before. I really appreciate that, that Emery and Garrett is very, very proactive in making us aware of these grants and opportunities. Right, and and, you know. Just letting us know that the money is out there. But it feels sometimes a little bit. Too easy for us to basically make that money flow, right? So he comes. And presents this, right? And and a lot of times there's some value to it, right? But then in the end, it's still money that's being. Used, coming from other funds, right? That we basically. You know. Authorize or make happen, right? Because it's, it requires our approval, right, in the end. And 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 it just seems a little bit. Like, is the real value there for the money that's being spent independently, whether or not it's ours? I know, for example, the salt mitigation. And I would have to go back to the meeting minutes, and maybe you guys remember better than I do, but. I swear that over the last two, three years, we've been talking a lot about this involvement. There's been a money paid. And aside from a couple of meetings and, you know, maybe, maybe fidelity committing and writing to doing something. On a state level, for example, I'm not really sure if I've seen the outcome, but the money, the clock is still ticking, right? It's going still to ching, to ching, to ching. And. I I appreciate that these twenty thousand make us more buying from DES, but what is that buying gonna be? And is it committed already? Now, do we have any reason to believe that? Those one hundred thousand dollars in total will really achieve something?
It's supposed to be a very detailed project to protect the wellhead protection area. So I know we're installing, um. For the process of, uh. Some three monitoring wells. There's about three, I don't know if you looked in there additional information, but the Duncan Gomez. Monitoring well over there. The sodium was seven forty and chlorine was twelve hundred, it's the highest we've ever seen, almost double last.
Yeah, almost double.
So they want to put in, um. To monitoring wells with, um, CTD divers, which the conductivity ones, that will help. Get salt levels as well, some sort of formulas. There's two on Genghis property and one that's on the town property, actually just sent out. Emails today. To, um, work with them. We've already talked to Genghis about. Their property, but we haven't talked to the town yet of, uh. The parcel was right up on the top of the drive, remember the warehouse? So that project is up, it's going, um, talking with Steve Landry, he's looked us in on a lot of emails that he's working with them, they're gonna have this out. With like DOT and, because we just. Tried, um.
So Jamie mentioned to me that. This grant requires participation and follow up with. DOT. Like they have to participate in this, they can't just. Kind of keep pushing us away and. You know. I'm not sure it's because it's coming from EPA or something that it's required that they have to participate, when. He said it, he said it's like a way to hold their feet to the fire. Because they haven't really been very responsive as we wanted them to be.
So this whole project is gonna move DOT into. Think of part of the sodium fluorid production training. And that will open doors for us as well, and that's through. The gentleman saying of the DES, that he works with DOT. And they, they're. It's gonna find us the right person, right now, yeah, basically the. Road crew that we're trying to. Get interested, opposed to something that might be more environmental or. Staff.
May, maybe this is the wrong opportunity to, you know, to to make this a, a deal and to make this an issue. It just feels to me that. There's there's money continuously flowing that needs our nod, right? That needs our approval. And and that money is coming from somewhere, right? It's going somewhere else, and I want to make sure that if we are the catalyst that makes that money flow, that we are. Feeling okay about making that money flow, I'm not sure if that's always the case personally.
They do a lot of a lot of the projects for us, it's tracking, it's ground monitoring, it's sampling over Duncan Gomis, it's um. Stanley and Mitchell Woods is a every year contract, so it probably seems like we keep signing contract after contract. And it's just like a yearly maintenance thing, like groundwater, so that we have quite a few of those. Where they come out and they do the sampling, it may only be quarterly, maybe thirty five hundred dollars, but we do spend a contract every year.
Well, all right, so timing, if if this, we don't vote on this to approve tonight, what what happens? Do we lose this opportunity?
We, I can't send it the final application and and drag up governor and council approval as well, because that's not taking three, four months.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds that, I thought we were gonna have Jamie available to speak, I didn't know he was away today. But I think a lot of these questions could have got answered directly, you know. I do remember there the attachment to this email, the email from the state was a lot of items in there. Extra that they were asking for. But um, I don't know, I'm just wondering if if we don't approve this tonight, what the repercussions are. I don't want to lose this grant, I mean, this is really an opportunity. We can get a hundred thousand dollars of value.
We're not gonna lose the grant, the added work is just not gonna be done.
They'll just limit what he's gonna be able to do. It's gonna have to lock off at eighty thousand dollars if we don't end up with the other twenty, but I'm looking to that.
But I don't know if D E S would accept it, because they're kind of telling us that's what we need to do in this grant, so.
No, the the S is not saying anything that to us, they're telling Emery and Garrett that they want additional work done. And he's reaching out to us to pay for it, right? Then the S needs to make a decision, do they need the work done? If not, they can approach us, right?
I don't know if it's something that that D E S requires, because it's coming from a higher authority, possibly from EPA or something.
But then they should communicate with us as well, shouldn't they?
This is the first of its kind, so I think this is gonna be a lot of buzzword, no.
I mean, I don't want to hold up the vote if everybody else is okay with it, I I just.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying.
If other people don't agree with that, that's fine, then.
I I'm I'm just concerned that with with whatever we have been doing, whether it's been money well spent or not. It's it's our salt is still going up worse than ever, so. The last thing I want to do is to do less than what the state is asking us through Emery and Garrett, you know, I don't think that would be. A good idea, and I do remember seeing more daunting tasks being assigned on an email that's not in front of us, unfortunately, but. You know, I they did add on more work, so. I don't think Jamie could just swallow that work, and I don't think it's good practice to not do the work that D E S is asking. So for those reasons, I I'd be in favor of this if a if a motion motion was made. I'm just afraid that, you know, not going through with this could cause problems.
I think it's a worthwhile project, and I, if you've seen the tasks that were added, then I'm okay with it. I just, you know, I haven't seen the tasks that were added, so for somebody to be like, hey, we need twenty thousand dollars more, or what?
Yeah.
So, I mean, do I think it's worth twenty thousand dollars to get the D O T to the table? Maybe?
Right, that's the only thing.
So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, like.
I'm not even sure who's owning that project right now, it's not M V D, right? I mean, the project of this study, right, that is financed by this grant.
It would, yeah, be us.
So we're the owner of that project?
We have, it it was Jamie applied for the grant for us, right?
So we would still be the owners of the project.
Yeah, I'm just confused why I mean, but why why um D S isn't talking to you guys? You know, why isn't, why are they not talking to us about this and saying, hey, we're happy with this, but we need additional work, since you're the, you know, the the the. The region, the owner of that project that Emery and Garrett is doing for you, based on the grant that we're paying you, M V D. You know, why isn't M D S telling us we need additional scope delivered? And then Gary, you know, Emery and Gary comes to us and say, well, we're happy to do it for you, unless you want to do it yourself, right? We can, we'll do it for you, but it's gonna be twenty thousand dollars. There's just something is backwards here, and I'm not comfortable with that.
So the initial proposal. Came from, so we were pursued basically from N H D S, they said, hey. You know, we've got this grant, um. Eighty thousand dollars, originally Jamie looked at it, and we were kind of. Jamie looked at it, I was looking at it, and he's like, there's a lot of stuff here that, I don't know if you can, if I can do this for what this grant is, and. I think there was a, we're gonna try to do some uh. But we've already, we've already done some initial works in in, you know, but kind of had, actually, I think it was originally a matching grant, but now I'm saying that correct. And because of the work we've done.
It's like.
They was gonna kind of get credit, so that credit, essentially. And then, so he was working with D E S, and I can't remember his name off the top of my head. In filling out the grant and kind of. Scaling back, scaling it back a little bit, but it's kind of the other way as well, so but it would it. So that's where it came from, Jamie pretty much working with D E S, because he was filling out the initial grant with them, and it was kind of, they were helping. Trying to streamline it and trying to get it. So a lot of the um. In state, the 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 state guy filled out a lot of the, kind of steered us in a sense of what to fill out and what to put in. So it's kind of the reason why Jamie and state have been working together, and then and then it uh. The added tasks came while they were working.
I mean, I feel, I feel like the state is looking out for us, it's, you know, and and. To jeopardize that, I'd be a little concerned about, it kind of really, it could be explained better, for sure, Jamie was here and. For give us all the background that he's been involved with, but.
John and Ken and I mailed you the attachment that Don was talking about, and Aaron and John um both have have them now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, take a look. I mean, this part here is a little bit convincing, but I'm still not. I I still insist that I think there's there should be communication from D S coming to us. I I just think that's missing, because they're the they're the driver, they're on the driver's seat, right? It's our project evidently. Emery and Garrett is just a contractor, that's all they are, right? Why isn't D S talking to us and saying, there's twenty thousand dollars missing? Can you guys pitch in?
I'm assuming they're going, they're using our Jamie as an intermediary.
Yeah, but that's not usually.
With us, you know.
Right, but but I don't know. I mean, that that one email you had the M V D's, where where Jamie says. Um, the M V D is willing to match twenty thousand dollars to bring this two hundred thousand dollar project that did not vote on yet, as they wanted to see the final proposal. And be sure that there were no additional changes coming their way. I spoke with the chairman of the M V D Board of Commissioners at length, and he's excited to get this project moving forward. Particularly if it means that we can get the New Hampshire D O T to make real changes in their salting activities in the area of greatest interest. There's substantial difference between how the town solves the local roads and how the state does, and we will need all of your help to change the culture of the salt use in this area. So that's good, but it's still not something that we can lean on, right? If there's, it's just not tangible.
I don't know, I'm I'm a little less worried about spending twenty grand on this grant to try and get salt reduction down, the opportunity for it to be successful would. Represent a significant financial gain for the district. I'm not worried about the fact that Jamie's going to talk to the state, that's what we hired him to. And that the state's responding to him after he put the inquiry in, so I'd be inclined to go forward with it.
Any ideas on your leaning, Ken?
Uh, they honestly sound like. A little mixed, but, I mean. Me reading, I mean, this is going back from January. You know, I I. I kind of agree with John, it is twenty K and if it helps with the salt. But I understand Wolf's concerns too, though, I I know we, in the past, we have. Questioned things, you know, so.
I mean, I know we we can have this discussion with Jamie and have him. Better explain his rationale and everything, and I think if he was here, I think he would have been able to do that tonight.
If somebody wants to make a motion, I'm by any means, I know, I mean, it's, you know, it's five voices on here, five, five, five votes on here. But I just noticed, for example, not one says M V D been in copy in any of this, right? This is all Emery and Garrett to D S, not once are you in copy or on.
As well, I think he ultimately sent that to us with all the backup pain.
Yeah, and maybe, it's just not the way I see business done, so.
Then again.
And maybe it's just me, so, um, again, if somebody wants to put a motion out.
I mean, I see both sides, because I, you know. Do business with D E S and behalf of municipalities that I work for, and a lot of times we don't copy.
And we'll talk about money.
Uh, no, no, it's not like, yeah.
If anybody wants to make a motion, please go ahead.
Yeah, I wouldn't move it, I would, I would move to accept the additional twenty thousand in the watershed grant project. As proposed by Emery and Garrett.
All right, so motion by John.
Well, not to ex, not to accept the, to accept, to to approve the proposal. To approve the expenditure of twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Correct.
I'll second that myself for a rare second. Uh, does any other discussion or questions? Now's the time. If not, we'll call the motion, and um all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, John, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Ken?
Aye.
And Wolf, are you in opposition, abstention?
Not surprisingly, I am in opposition.
All right, so that's five uh one zero with Wolf being in opposition, but that's still. I'm sorry, four one zero, and um that motion still passes. I'm sure, I'm sure Jamie will definitely give us more color when he's available.
I appreciate the patience with the discussion, but I think it's important that occasionally we have to have these discussions.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, it's, you know, we, there were questions asked before and they weren't quite answered to satisfaction, so. And I think, you know, it could have been better answers, I think, um, and I think it could have been better explained. I haven't Jamie president, so unfortunately he wasn't here, so I understand that. All right, so we good on that one? Anything else you need? You got the sheet I signed? All right, so next, uh, we have the minutes for review from the May fifteenth regular board of commissioners meeting. Uh, and the non-public session, we can do those separately. Let's do the regular board of commissioners meeting minutes from May fifteenth. I hear a uh motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make motion to accept the minutes.
Motion by Aaron to accept those regular um meeting minutes for May fifteen. Anybody have a second on those? Second? Second by Wolf, does anybody have any corrections to offer on those? I'm good with those printed. All right, I guess seeing none, we can uh take a vote on that, all those in favor of uh accepting the regular board commissioners meeting, May fifteenth. As printed, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, John, how do you vote on those?
Was I there? Guys staying from this one, I couldn't find them.
You weren't there, were you?
Yeah, I think.
You were absent.
All right, I'm out then, I'm abstaining.
Ken was.
No, he was absent.
All right. Ken, are you abstaining too?
I'm abstaining, yeah.
Okay, so uh the minutes passed three zero two with John and Ken abstaining. And um. The other minutes are for the non-public sessions.
So I'm just gonna repeat my comment from earlier, um, I think all that needs to be said here is that I think those sealed minutes of the. Non-public meeting, oh, June first, contain information that shouldn't be in there, all it needs to say that, um. Okay, but normally, normally the message is that all needs to say discussion with legal. I just find it, I find it weird that there's information in here that I believe would allow people to, you know, research records. And and get leads on ideas on how to respond to what we discussed, so I find that weird. Maybe discussion with Carrie.
All right, um, I know these minutes have been sealed, correct? Does that mean? They are not public record, they can't, public is not accessible.
I think they're still discoverable, though. On table until next meeting?
Um, yeah, why don't we do that just to get confirmation, it's not a significant thing anyways. Uh, is everybody okay just tabling those so we can get a clarification on um the content of those minutes? From uh Carrie, discussion with her. I'm okay with that, all right, all right, let's table the the non-public minutes then. Uh, so I think that's all the minutes we had, right? So um moving on to number seven, we got the action items from the previous meetings. If any to be added to this meeting, from this meeting?
Can you go back a second? I think there's also um. We opened the public session to go into non-public. I think you have to move those minutes as um three seconds minutes. Because.
I don't.
Opening, it's on the way back.
Three minutes in there?
Yeah, well, there's two, and then there's the ones in the envelope, that they weren't emailed.
Oh, yeah.
The public session of the non-public.
The frame, the public frame for the public meeting.
So we just need to approve the um minutes for the June first emergency meeting, emergency um. Oh, all right, then we went into public, back to public to close out.
Okay, so the, so the June first.
That's where we seal the minutes. I guess we probably should be tabling then, if we. Table the non-public ones.
Yeah, I guess we'll just table those two. All right, we'll just table those as well, I was just looking at the thing, they only called out the two of them here, so I wasn't sure. So we'll table both of those, and we approve one. All right, so moving on to action items. The further are the action item. Someone I didn't meet him. All right. So. Okay, number two. What are these, the quarterly um graphs? No, the E S R's, I think you're offset on that till July, right? Number two. Right. Back on track here, number twenty-three, uh, results of additional P F A S and the distribution system, those were included. In this packet. And I did look those over. It's pretty astonishing that we're basically getting non-detect of all sample PFAS. Even though we have some coming through. At well, seven and eight, we have some short chains coming through there, but they're not being detected. It must be getting diluted so much that they're not detectable. All right, I was just kind of curious on that, because we do have PFAS coming through the short chains. Don't think we do a Wells four and five yet. I think it's just seven and eight right now, so I think it's just seven and eight. Yeah. Two and nine, there's. Yeah, that's fresh, hopefully. Yeah.
There's nothing in any of it.
Right. All right, so number twenty-three, what was that one? No, we already did that, sorry. Number forty, M V D open house treatment plant, we had that pushed off till our, or. Yeah, we're looking at doing that in August.
Yep.
Um, is there anything we need to be setting up at this point that we have any questions on, or you need our clarification on that at all? I don't know if you really. Been looking too hard into that at all?
I haven't. Looked at some. All right. And still there's going to be a stop, well, two is going to be a stop as well.
Okay.
It's going to be a stop.
Good. Um, number forty-three, the ongoing salt mitigation committee meetings. There's something about sending out a Google poll for a summer meeting. All right, that's good. Uh, number forty-seven and forty-nine, I think we just made changes to those in the earlier discussion with Keith, right? And that was picked up by Amanda, I believe.
Yep.
All right, so number fifty-five, uh. Review sick time, sick pay, pay time off.
You just passed adding the probation. Um, for sick vacation and personal. There was in your. As we were discussing. Pay time off. Well, if you had inquired about our annual accrual, I did. Uh, give a copy of our last year's accrual. So it's one hundred fifty-four thousand that we accrue each year. Uh. And that stays on the books and we actually accrued the change between the previous year and the last year, but we're basically accounting for a hundred fifty-four thousand. On pay time off between the fact that we have fiscal that we're doing in calendar.
And it's reserved.
Amanda, can you change that task item to show Kristen's name instead of Charles?
Yeah, good point.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I did it under the assigned to and didn't notice.
And I think we, if you guys accepted the policy, I think we are done with it.
Think so. Is there anything else that we wanted addressed? Uh, so everybody's happy with that, we can, um, put number fifty-five to completed. And move that off of this, this page. So I guess you can do that, Amanda, number fifty-five.
Yep.
And number fifty-seven, sounds like we're going to discuss that in August. That wasn't carried over from August last year or nothing, was it? Okay. Um, okay, so number fifty-eight, updated information on the mineral graphs. Those look like, uh, they're going to be due in August. Is that what that is here? Okay. So we can keep that there. Uh, number fifty-nine, evaluation proactive measures to track and correlate water quality complaints with this coloration, I think that. Kind of, um.
We have data now. Doing some really good stuff with G I S and Brian's been working on it. Ian, Amy, I think Kristen here on this too. They're working at correlating the G I S to the survey pro. It's called, so right one, two, three.
Oh.
They're, don't have. Yeah, I've been running ready to, yeah, but there's been a lot of progress the last.
That's filled out for the water quality complaint that will actually throw a doc right on the map.
Oh.
It actually has a spot. At a work order, so keep track of work orders separately and also has a note field that did written in as well.
So if you physically go out, we'll do the work order, if it's resolved over the phone, don't say how it was resolved.
Oh, nice. Well, to be able to go back on it and track what everything was about, how it was resolved or what.
Started all this with a survey one, two, three, that was, and I put us in touch with Megan and she knew all about that stuff and she put her and Brian together and. You know, ran with it.
Wow, that's great.
Awesome to be something that we already have a license, so it's even better.
Awesome.
Amy did the forums and they didn't work hard on it.
It's great. That's great to hear. I mean, that was within a week, right? I mean, we just talked about it a week ago.
Avenue to go down, it was a bit easier.
Where there's a will, there's a way, right?
All right, so let's keep that because I think we're still working on it. It's not, you know, not a completed item. Do we want to put a future date that? Have another update on or presentation on how it's going or? All right, we'll just keep it there. Um. So I guess you just put it out to the next, um, month of, say, uh, the July meeting, just the general update.
Yeah, maybe you can probably do the same thing you're doing with the other ones where you're putting ongoing reports to be given in.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good. Uh, all right, so the next number sixty-seven, inquire with D O T about moving the, um. The no salt sign closer next to ten, anything on that?
I keep it on my.
And five hundred for twenty grand.
Sending emails.
This is something we're probably going to have to bring up when we get that grant work going. When they, when they come to the table, when they're forced to the table. Uh, but so let's leave that there so we don't forget it. All right, number sixty-eight, investigate funding, if funding is available for artificial recharge in Mitchell Woods.
So one of us make, we were denied the ARPA. The Hillsborough County ARPA funds, is that what?
County ARPA funds, we originally did a. Grant through them, or, uh, an application for a grant through them. We got a denial. Letter. I just, we're not, I'm not a hundred percent now, I was assuming it was for the. Mean line extension grant that we went forward, mean line extension, it was, um.
Mitchell Woods.
Natural recharge, so. I just don't know what it's for now, that what they denied, because I can't.
It's a generic email that went out, it says your project has been denied, da, 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 but it doesn't specifically say, so I just emailed them today and said.
It's which or all or what?
Because they were all five, uh, in.
Three separate ones?
Three separate filings, so it should have been three separate letters, so I don't know which one.
Oh, I see.
Hopefully it was one and we got two.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I was, what was thinking of, but I don't know where I came up with it was. The wellhead, uh, the, the water main extension grant, so I.
All right, so, so we'll leave that there, yes, get follow up on that one if you can, if we hear back hopefully in, in time for next meeting. Um, number seventy-two, staff to present solutions, that's going to be for paperless billing, that's due in November. So we'll keep that one on. Number seventy-four, uh. Rate discussion for June meeting, including under root to discuss rate increase. We did that. Then we did approve that to move forward as presented, right? So we probably don't need this item anymore then, because it's just a matter of formality now to get it. Through for finals, right? So if that's the case, um, number seventy-four can be retired, Amanda.
Instead, um, we, uh, we discussed, discussion of public hearing for July.
Uh, yeah, sure, might as well just do a new action item.
Okay.
And just say, like Jill said, a rate, um, public hearing for rate increase. Uh, at the July meeting. We'll just make that at the same day as our regular meeting. All right, the next number is seventy-five, capital reserve fund balance policy. And we, um.
The capital reserve is not really a policy per se, but I started giving you the trust. Report, um, if you need any more details or descriptions or whatever, I can. But I think that may have covered kind of where we are with the capital fund. Um, in terms of the fund and balance policy, I am very close to finishing it, but I didn't have it, didn't finish in time for this meeting. Um, I did do. A report that I'd like to start giving you in your financials, which is the fund balance report that was in. Right under, uh. The action items to give you. The way that I did it is by fund, which is unfortunately QuickBooks can't do this, so I have to do it in Excel, but it's by. How our system is done in terms of projects and funding, but we'll also give you an idea of where we stand with our net income. Uh, I did put in. To give you an idea, if we did approve the fund policy, I did put in the two point one million, so that's where. Underwood was getting that amount of thirty-three percent of our next year's budget of six million dollars. Uh, along with our system development, that's something that stays restricted until we get moved into the trusts. Um, and covered per, purchase orders are covered expense, that's actually last year's figure, that gets changed once the end of the year and I know what. Purchase orders get rolled over, so. I'd like to do this monthly for you, but there'll be some numbers that are last year's numbers because they don't change till the next year. But it will still give you a better idea of where we are in terms of our overall company. This includes all accounts, not just our operating, includes, if I say below the line accounts, so this is all encompassing of our operation. And with this snapshot of May and our net income of five point one million. That does include the three million grants that we actually took and paid off the loan with. So it's counted as revenue in terms of our revenue minus expense. But we didn't actually get it. It's paid off the loan and our real, that whole refinancing of two, three, seven, eight. Um. This also gives, will give you a breakdown of each of our projects, given they're all winding down. But if we come up with newer projects like the artificial recharge, they'll have their own columns so that you guys can start to see. What's going with these other projects. Um, the fund policy, as I say, I'm hoping to have you guys ready for July. The biggest thing is I'm writing it and we did kind of go over and Jamie said. It's a percentage of what you want to have for our fund balance reserve, thirty-three percent, twenty-five percent, eighty percent. They give you that number, I'm pretty much set and ready. So that's, I guess, kind of, I can present it to you and we can just fill in the percentage or something to vote on for next. Meeting, but that's basically where we stand in terms of what I've got left to do with it and what you want that to be. And as I had said, we can start low and you guys can always vote to raise that higher and higher.
So that's a different, that's different than what we spoke of earlier?
Nope, there's a fund balance policy and then this is just a fund balance report. They'll start including with your monthly financials that gives you an overall of what's going on with the company.
That, that policy could include language that says, for example, that in preparation for the annual budget discussion that the board should decide on a, on a target. Annually, you know, and that can be adjusted up and down.
Correct.
And then you guys can do that proposal based on that and.
Okay, yep.
That might be a good idea, just to keep that on everybody's radar and we can dial it up and dial it down as we seek it.
And you don't have to redo the policy every year and change the number?
Exactly, right. Yeah, we just fill in the blank basically for the. Percentage. And when we say budget. Um, we said earlier six million, six million dollars, right? But six million dollars is, is our, is our. But it's, it's really the revenue side of things. Right?
Correct.
So, so really, as we look at our, um. Um, fund reserves, we should look at the cost budget, not at the revenue budget, so.
Yes, because our revenue budget. Does include some grants, uh, it does not include all of our grants, though, because I do report some of them below the line. Uh, for projects that are below the line.
I guess my point is we don't need to make margin from covering the cost of the cost budget from any fund reserves, I'm trying to say. So.
But do you have questions on the format I just, the look of this? The report is out. Some other, and if you've got, like, if you want to call me, just just walk you through, yes, I can, um. Some other projects or action items that I had that never made a number, we're just kind of, our windows up is three sixty-five, we are up and running. Um. You will hopefully start seeing things from me in that shared folder. So that I don't have to send you an email that I think will be to get to you because it's so large.
So is that shared folder going to basically include, it's just going to grow and keep including more things as there. Put up to the.
In terms of, I will share a folder with you, which will be my stuff, she will have her stuff. As you guys approve it, I can take it out so that it doesn't grow for you guys, but I will have it in a saved place. So that when you go to my folder, it will just be what I need you to look at.
Okay.
If you want me, I should. Keep other stuff there, but that's really up to you guys.
Yeah, what do you think about that? I mean, I don't know.
I would, I would create a top level folder that contains all the board of commissioners information. And then for each meeting. You know, we would have our respective packages added and I would not take those, the prior ones.
Not those, I'm talking, when you like approve the, I don't count payable.
Oh, yeah.
What's in that folder will just be the, what I need you to look at and review. But if I'm giving that to you every two weeks, that folder is going to get.
Yeah, okay, if we're talking about the approval record, that's a different story.
Yeah, the one that I have.
Packages.
P O C is only.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other was monthly billing, we seem to be on track for July first. Um, and then some quick numbers with what's been going on with our customer portal. Uh, we now have forty-two percent of our customers signed up in the portal. Um. Roughly thirteen percent are e-bill only. And thirteen percent are set up to do auto pay. So from my original numbers from going to monthly, we were tracking in about ninety-one thousand a year. We have just saved fifteen thousand based on our customer quarter so far, and this was. Um, we're into a year and a half and two months using that portal. So forty-two percent is. Pretty good for only one year. They were telling us it would take about six to seven years to get half your customers on your portal.
Um, I think the discount thing is a, uh, action item here, if I'm not mistaken, too. Let's see, where were we? The number seventy-five, so number seventy-five, we're, we'll just leave that for now.
For July.
Yeah. All right, so you got that, Amanda, you can change that to July. I know we already covered the. Reserves or whatever, but, um. Okay, number seventy-six, uh, we were talking about that in November, irrigation ban bylaws. Triggers seventy-seven, um. That was going to be in July and that is, uh. What is this? Outlining daytime scope attendance and preparations for requested public events. Is there anything being done on that? For July? All right. Uh, number seventy-eight, that zeolite suppliers or potential. Uh number seventy-eight, that zeolite suppliers or potential PFAS removal.
I've been in touch with a company that specifically went up at Zealite. There's a good company that have been waiting for some numbers from us that I give out. Their version is closely more inexpensive and request savings um. But they I haven't gotten anything back with that, I looked through key uh and provided some numbers and some graphs and some. Fast levels for the area as well, so.
Okay.
I I think I mentioned that before, I'm not sure if. So Lorena claims that she has a zeolite. Filter at home instead of a GAC filter and maybe you know anything about that?
A little bit, just as I I know she has it, that's probably about all I know.
But but she must have had a supplier. So.
Yeah, I think it was uh. Think it was them.
Okay, so she's just in a water like we are, okay. Yeah, okay.
I can ask her, she isn't much with them at all.
I I do think I did ask her before and she didn't have any more information about how to contact them or, but I don't know if she. I don't know, that might be worthwhile.
Yeah.
Maybe she knows another supplier, we can hit up.
Yeah, I do know there's a meeting on the St. Obane air. Air discharge permit, the twenty-first, yeah, which is. Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, bad information. That's uh where is that? At the um CPR room and Jamie's.
I think it was at the high school, I would say.
Oh, yeah, it is, I think it's high school. They tried doing it by Zoom and they. We we tried doing Zoom from that little theater and it wasn't gonna work, so the same problem. EBS ran into, so it's not being offered on virtual, it's. Think it's only in public attendance. I was thinking of going to that, I think Laurie's going to that, so I can ask her about this when I see her then. Um but this gets me thinking the zeolite stuff and. We're also having Underwood look into um anion resin costs. I would definitely like to get back to that Wells four and five treatment plant where we had those future pilot columns. Kind of in reserve over there, this would be an opportunity.
To build them, but yes.
Right, right.
We we I just talked to Brian. Been a week or so, you get, we get a quote from uh Eric who was actually working with. The other contractor, he's actually both contractors at seven and eight and two and nine. To to possibly build that. We're trying to get a quote for a little bit actually and get a time when you get a bill sooner than later.
Alright, so no, they did some study, right, uh Underwood had some company do a.
Yeah, we had, yeah, it was a.
I don't remember the name either, but. It would be good to kind of keep that progressing.
Through them, it was pretty pricey to have built, so it was hoping to get it built.
Yeah, you know, I'm even thinking if some of these vendors are interested in having us pilot test their resin. Maybe they could send some support down and help us set it up and develop a program. Kind of maybe on their own, because they've got a vested interest if we're gonna be buying tons of. Zeolite or anion resin or something from them, so. Um it might be an opportunity to have them involved more to keep our costs down instead of having it. Privately, you know, engineered by someone, they could have some input into them. Or at least do some of the input with maybe with Underwood or something, you know, instead of having Underwood do a hundred percent of it. There there's a pure light vendor of the um PFAS anion resin that I know. And the guy is just really hard to get a hold of, but. He found out six months ago that I was on the MBD board and. He was very interested in talking to us about it and then. I reached out to him and he just hasn't called me back, I think he's just so busy, but. I'll try to keep that going, cuz I think, you know, that's gonna kind of jive together, we we have to make a decision if we wanna. Think about moving forward and I have resin, be good to know how it how its performance is before we pull the trigger. On something like that, so. Um do we want to uh make that an action item is to um, how we wanna word it, but to. Pursue um column tests, development at Wells four and five, just something generic like that. So it stays on the radar screen, I think we haven't talked about this in over six months, so.
It's been a while, so I'm not, I'm I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so if you uh if you heard that well enough Amanda to put another action item.
Yep, who would that be assigned to?
I don't know. Who did they assign to?
Everybody.
Oh, you decided to me.
Alright, it's Ron's offering, I appreciate that.
Decided down.
Delegate.
It rolls downhill.
Alright, good, so I think we're on seventy-nine, uh update on water. Waterline extension status monthly until resolved.
We're still, as far as uh. The uh. The grants we applied for. Through the.
The ARPS.
PFAS remediation fund.
Yeah.
Um those are still waiting for governor.
Governor comes well. Now, did we get approval on? I'm I'm getting confused cuz we combined two of the projects in one. Application, so do we submit two applications for three sites?
So we, we did.
Somebody was asking about that on the forum.
Four applications originally, we got approved for two, and they found, saying correctly. They combined two projects.
Okay.
It so it would be um. Right.
So the one that they denied is the one we applied to the county, right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so those are still up in the air, alright.
Up in the air, um I'm I am actually uh. Reviewing plans right now for the St. Obane uh water extensions, you know, for uh Brenda Lane. And in in the Wildcat Falls area, I'm reviewing those, but I'm reviewing, Brian's reviewing a set of plans as well for that.
So I think I remember years ago, we approved that water main extension in um. Was it Wire or Pearson?
Yes.
And we went all the way up to Babu's Brook. Now, I I think St. Obane would have been required to install that water line. Is there a way to recoup that cost?
Asking and I don't know if that was ever on the list. That they're required to put water main.
Out that far?
Out that far, I I keep asking, so I'm trying to get that that money.
Yeah, and there's a cul-de-sac up there that we ran water to or something, didn't we?
Yes, I know, Jason Drive.
Yeah, so none of those places came up as.
Not that I'm aware of, yeah.
Who are we asking?
I've been asking St. Obane for one or the. Here, W. WSP, I was W S O, but I didn't, that wasn't it, WSP is the engineering firm. I and I keep kind of, you know, what's that list, at least it's not these roads on the list and it it's not, it hasn't been.
But shouldn't shouldn't we ask the state?
Yeah.
Can, I mean.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, that that should be.
If the state says, whoa, there's already public water there, then.
Well, now.
But they're not even paying for, they're not even on the list to be be hooked up, is what I'm saying. And I would think that it would have been driven from the state saying all these houses need to be.
So there's still well, there's still private wells out there, they didn't hook up to those lines, okay?
Yeah.
Alright. Might be good just to remind them about that, cuz I remember when we approved that, commissioning that extra money. We said, let's keep track of this, the day comes where this needs to be mandated, that St. Obane would have had to put this line in. Let's make sure we can get them back on that. And I don't know that we can or not, but. That was what we discussed at the time. Okay, uh the the last one here is number eighty, staff to give update on a Penechak Water Works wholesale agreement that's probably still in the PUC or.
Actually, that was. Was that part of the backup packet?
I think it was.
Okay, um yeah, no, we've got it, it's got approved, so basically. It was approved on the June fourteenth, there's a thirty-day uh period where they can request. Somebody can request a uh stay in 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 a public hearing. But if this nothing comes in prior to July seventh, contract becomes effective July thirteenth. And the requirement to use the two hundred fifty K, two hundred fifty thousand gallons per day over the year starts. So.
Alright. Good to know. So just some other stuff in our packet here, like Jill was alluding to, where is the latest monitoring well testing? Twelve hundred parts per uh million of chloride. Um are those new wells you said? Okay. And then you had, maybe I'm getting into your.
That's why you you knocked one off, alright.
But it's in the packet, that's why I'm just bringing it up, the um tour with uh representative um. Sorry, I get it, Ricardo, that's right, yes. Then he, that happened and everything that was.
Yes, I have, it went went well, and I guess uh oh, or that helped aided in the additional funding of. A bill.
Oh, yeah. Good, yeah, so that was a bill that helped get passed there, then we got results in the distribution system and um. A lot of sites, I think all sites were non-detect. In the April twenty sampling round. Which is good news. Um and then I think the only other stuff in here, see here. Oh, yeah, there's a letter in here from New Hampshire Water Works Association saying that they do not agree with the four parts per trillion MCL for PFobay. And they, I saw the letter that they sent to and it actually references like. You know, we have PFOW contamination in Meramec and at Peace Trade Port and all that stuff and. You know, personally, I'm in favor of these MCLs, so they, it almost kind of makes it sound like they spoke for us. Which I wasn't really pleased to see that.
Me neither.
So um.
Is that something you guys had planned to? Talk about a new business or something or?
No, I I just wanted to throw it in there, so you.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate this.
Been, I mean, we could have commented on that. I guess that they had a, they put a sample letter out and kind of encouraged us to different. Departments to kind of.
Oh, yeah, kind of copy the letter and.
Go with it and yeah, yeah.
Wow.
I mean, it says, can you please share a test letter with your colleagues, colleagues and legislators, I hope we are not doing that, right, as as a district? What's that? No, and 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 independently from that, right, I mean, we. I think the board collectively, I mean, we have been given a mandate by our voters to do the opposite of what this letter is intending to do, right, so. Right. Right, this letter is, this letter is covering all those things that we don't want to do. Right, it's doing the exact opposite of what we've been doing now since, when did we get elected?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, I need to remember is one of these days. So, I mean, we've been working here for years against what this letter says, so that needs to be said very clearly.
I guess, I don't know if this would prompt like a letter from, when I first read this, I was like, I'd like to. You know, call him up and say, hey, where are you getting up, you know, referencing Meramec in here? Kind of speaking for us and to kind of correct the record ourselves. Um I don't know if that means we should try to put a letter together ourselves and send this out. I I just don't like the way this is left here without us responding to the letter. Uh but again, I'm not sure that I have time to put a letter together or if anybody would have time to do that, but.
You first probably would need to run it by legal anyway, if we even can do that, might be a good idea to.
I know. That we never get. Resolution on that either, huh?
You might wanna check the deadline on the comment period before you go off to legal and I'm I was pretty much. They got it in at the deadline and so I feel like it's probably too late for us to.
Yeah, I think you're right, John, cuz. I think I wrote my own personal letter or email and um. I think I was right before the deadline, so it's probably too late at this point. Alright, um that's fine, I don't know if we need to go through more of this, but um. I guess, uh why don't we just move on to uh? What's next, old business? Some of this is, but anybody have any specific old business to bring up?
I have two quick ones, so um one thing that we talked about with the person was uh. To find alternatives for the lockbox service. Right, because that's one of the key cost drivers of the monthly billing. And she stated in her summary here that we are, you know, signed up with them for a year and that's okay. But um I I might wanna suggest adding an action item. To, let's say, I don't know when the renewal is, for example, right, for that, for that service. But maybe prior to the renewal of that, three months prior to the renewal of that, of that service to to maybe do a study, what's out there as alternatives.
We're all, well, it's gonna be tracked anyways from how much we're doing initially. This is gonna be a push for them to um give us. People just filling it on um online, they'll pay on a. Now the next year will be up to seventy percent. Possibly much less expensive.
Right.
This is what it covers, like it's around two hundred checks or fifty checks or thousand checks. We get all the details for that too.
I I just know like three quarters of the cost increases were due to the ballpark, if I recall right, and. May- maybe the task is more like review that, right, three months prior to the renewal of that lock lockbox service. And then maybe propose actions on. On how to reduce that cost impact. Either by seeing if there's alternative vendors or. Doing a communicate PR work or something with our clients, with our customers to see that we can sign them up. That's what, that was kind of was what what I was wondering, making to create an action item for that, so. Cuz I mean, that's that's a huge impact on 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 our cost, right, that was like. I don't know, was. It was five digits, I know, it was five digits, yeah.
I wanna say like twom around twenty-five thousand dollars.
I thought it was twenty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty, yeah, something like that.
But that was the increase, we already had existing costs, it was a twenty thousands of dollar increase, so it's more than twenty seven, twenty twenty-seven thousand doll per year.
Yeah, if it's something we wanna follow up on, I think it makes sense to put it on there, you know, as we get follow up. Put her off too.
No. So that was one, um then I wanted to ask warranty start and end dates for the, you know, treatment plants. Have we received warranty start letters for these yet, or, you know, seven, eight, two, nine?
Is that substantial completion, is that when it starts?
Yes. So yeah, um seven and eight, yes, actually, uh we do, we're into it as well on two and nine, cuz we made substantial. When when nine came online.
Okay.
So we, yes, we're in a warranty period if things happen, you know, it was the break, it's all it's warranty.
Okay.
And we're still working on a punch list as well for two and nine.
Okay. And then I have something for new business, so go ahead.
Yeah, um I don't have any old business, so I guess, anybody have any old old business, if not, we can move on to new business? Alright, hearing none, new business?
Just a quick one, I spent a lot of time on the website website here recently because some people were asking me for pictures from the from the. You know, filtration plants and so on, the new ones, and I realized that it's actually quite outdated as far as the construction projects.
I noticed that as well, that's four and five and stuff there.
Yeah, so so specifically the construction projects, either we need to take it off or we need to freshen, you know, freshen it up. Um and I did find in general that I think it's maybe time for a little bit of, maybe not now, but eventually for some. It seems that some things have just grown organically and stuff has been added at the bottom, you know, it's just, it doesn't look very purposeful anymore in some areas. So, you know, might be worth to consider having a look at that.
So if you're looking for some pictures, I know I did a presentation uh to New England Water Works. For and Underwood's portal has photos of the treatment plants. And you can always go out and take more, I know you guys are there daily.
Four five had like. Four five had like. From foundation to.
Yeah, so it had like progress.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to say with.
I don't know.
Not, you know, when I, it probably wouldn't hurt even.
But even if we take it down, you know, the construction projects are over, I'm not, I'm just saying the construction portion of our website. Construction projects is, is, is really, really stale.
I thought you were talking about like adding to it, but.
And, and we can do that too, I'm just saying the way it is right now, it doesn't look good because it's. It just shows a huge gap, you know, if you know what's going on out, out on the system with all these construction projects, you wonder why, why so many of them have not been covered. So either we have to take it down or we have to refresh it.
Okay, any other, uh, new business? There was something I was reading, I can't find it right now, but, um, was it in the, um. The watershed application or something, I read somewhere it said well three was decommissioned. And I can't remember where I read that.
That was probably in the meeting minutes and then I was corrected and so, is that where it was?
Oh, is that what I'm thinking?
Because that was clarified that it's not decommissioned.
It's not used, right?
Oh, all right, all right, that's probably what I saw then, which it would have been too late to present now. Okay, good, because there's a big difference between decommissioned and activated.
Um, even our well six is not decommissioned.
Right. I don't, I don't have any new business. Anybody else? Then we can go to superintendent report.
Where you talked about the opera proposals, uh, the special project. So remember the special contract we had with Penn and Chuck is, uh, over the winter time of sixteen, sixty-five cents, it's supposed to be a re. Reconciliation after the fact. Um, so that was done, uh, the P C has a premium of forty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cent refund. Nice, so you can get back.
And now who pays that, Penn and Chuck?
What was the amount, I'm sorry?
Six, twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-one thousand. Sixty and sixty-three cents. And then I mentioned that we are involved reviewing plans for, uh. Run the lane and Wildcat Falls area projects, so. That's all I have now.
How about the, uh, I know we talked about this, but how about the? The progress or lack of progress with the voca?
Yeah, um.
On both plants, really, on four and five and seven and eight, I know four and five is new in August.
It's two in August, I haven't even, so I originally asked the voca, well, we had three dates. Set, it was before Memorial Day, it was, um.
May twenty-sixth, yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was the twenty-sixth, the thirtieth. And June fifth, with three dates, possible dates that we could do the change out. I had said, for the prior, I had sent a profile. The media and sent the profile form. That was supposed to come back, the worst case scenario, scenario, if they didn't have the profile results back, would have been June fifth. We're long past that and we still do not have the results back there. I was bugging weekly, still bugging, and the last team said was, he was told that. They're very, they're backed up the, in the lab and. When they, the results are, come in, yeah, they'll let them know.
Oh, so they're saying the lab is holding them up, it's not actually a voca's. Uh, regeneration process itself then?
Yep, it's just the, the lab, they haven't got the results back from the lab, all the profile, they say the media is good to reject.
This kind of sounds like the well nine thing with the cable, you know, it's, it's the cable supplier, it's not the contractor.
I also asked, that I haven't got an answer on, I will bug him again. It's the, so. I was told originally when we did well for change out that, once you do a profile, you have the profile done. You don't need another one for like five years. Well, when you're filling out the paperwork for the profile and says you need to do it yearly, if it, if anything over a year, you redo a profile. So, um, and this is from a vulgar, so I'm getting conflicting.
Well, the media four and five was last changed. Unless they're talking about the different vessel now. Because it was changed out in December, it's right here in Lynette's. Um, or, not Lynette, sorry, the other one from, um, Underwood, Stephanie Cosman, the email in our packet. And it says, you know, that, uh, media was at Wells four and five was changed on December ninth. Uh, and we are having breakthrough through the lead vessel. So that means eight months from there would be August, that's where the August is coming from. So I wonder if that, if they're saying less than a year, you don't need the profile.
So we might be fine over there.
Yeah, although it's a different vessel now, so I don't know if that means the original vessel.
Uh, it's, it's.
The same profile for each vessel is the same, I guess.
My understanding is that what they're doing is just make sure there's nothing in the water, heavy metal or like that, that would.
Yeah.
Be a reason they can't do the regen, so.
So, I think you should start that process with a vocal if you haven't yet, Wells four and five. Because if they don't require a profile. Then they can't use that as the reason to not follow through with scheduling. To try to get this scheduled to be done in August, right? So, at least definitely, uh, see if you can follow up on those. All right.
Um, we, we don't have the option to look into other suppliers.
That's what I was wondering, not, not suppliers, but how about regenerating, if there's other places that regenerate their, their carbon?
No question.
Because, because we don't need, like, does Calgon's place, if we had Calgon resin and we need, they need to regenerate, where would they bring it? Because.
Going forward, I know that there's the original warranty of what's filtered, but as far as. Is there anything in there that says that if there's more than this loss or something that?
I don't, the warranties are all over at this point, yeah.
Okay, so if some place else breaks five degrees hotter, then it generates that.
Oh, the warranty of destruction, you mean?
Right, oh, yeah, so if they go and they. It's their media, it's their destruction process, if they screw something up, then. I think it could be their problem, but if we said that somewhere else for destruction, they did five degrees higher and incinerate all the media, what happens?
I mean, whoever, whoever, wherever the incinerator is, should offer the warrants. Or not, I guess not. That it's been destroyed in accordance with, you know, the temperatures needed and whatnot. Yeah, because it was a vocal, it gave us the wishy-washy one, the last ones.
So I'm not quite sure how that, so. Evoc would, I just got notified that, uh. They merged with another company.
Oh.
And they actually got rid of, or somebody else picked up the, the transportation piece of it. But it's still going to be through a vocal because it's, we're going to. You regen, you lose about fifteen to twenty percent of your media, that needs to be made up so that somehow they got to be able to.
Get that extra.
Get that, that extra media and.
So in, in, in any sales market, in any market, if one supplier is not cutting it. The other suppliers are all over this like hyenas. So, I would reach out to the other suppliers out there and openly tell them, you know. We have issues here with the vocal and, and obviously we want to talk to the salespeople, not to some customer service, you know, whatnot, or. Operational guy that wants, you know, that's responsible for, for scheduling change outs, we want to talk to the sales representative. Of that company responsible for this region and say, what do you guys say? How can you help us out? What's, what, you know, what's your value purpose?
I did talk to Calgos, and as far as the media goes. We wouldn't be able to switch to a Calgon without doing a complete change out because of the difference. Uh, beats, different weights of the media.
Right.
That's good.
But I'm not a hundred percent, I don't know if. Calgon has their own.
Regeneration.
Generation plant, so if it's, if it's one place and maybe it would kind of brings them.
It just feels like we need to start playing these guys against each other because they're, apparently it's too easy to make money in this market, so we need to make it harder. Because they're not trying the way it sounds. I mean, it certainly has not tried ever since we started working with them. And. We need competition in the, in, in the game.
Well, I don't know, it sounds like a vocal might not be aware that we're looking to change out the vessel at Wells four and five in August.
I, I mentioned it to him, but I haven't, I asked a question was, you know, about the, uh, the. If there needed to be another profile done, anything over a year. He couldn't answer that, John is out on, I, I want to see he's out on medical leave or something, so it's kind of a new guy, a newer guy filling in and. Uh, I've taken over his responsibilities for a short term, but. He wasn't from that department, so he's kind of, he's been, he's been responsible, but it's, it's never, uh. So it was like a week to get an answer, they've done, put a request in it, get away the week for you.
This is really confusing because all of these are revenue opportunities for these companies. They should, they should be reaching out to us saying, hey, shouldn't you guys be ready for, for the next change out, right, for the next refurbishment? Because they make money every time that we need to do this, right? They should be all over this, they should be monitoring the frequency for us.
I think they even think about scaling to where this is going with all the.
Maybe.
I think that's the problem, they can't promise what they can deliver. That's what I think. But it's going to be hard, I mean, we, we made this procedure that we all voted for eight month change out on breakthrough and we're not going to be able to meet. It's not, I tell you right now, it's not going to happen in August. Would have to be planned a month or two ago, you know? I don't know what else.
If the profile doesn't need to be done, they should be able to pick that up and, and.
That's what I'm saying.
It's on when they can get it.
Yeah.
So.
I just. You know, stay on these guys like almost daily, I mean, weekly is not.
It's been a joy.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Have, have we tried to reach, you know, have we asked for a superior manager, for a vice president, for, you know, I mean, the plant manager?
It's funny, you know, even when we do, um. We've had work sessions with, with them. And you'll get one person doing all the talking, it could be, you know, John was doing the talking. Everybody else is. Nobody's got the cameras on, it was all fast zoom, I actually had to literally ask, advance, you know, can we turn cameras on so I can actually see who's.
Yeah.
On the other side and. They did, but. The next minute it went all back to blank, but.
But you get a channel, your inner bulldog, go after these guys, I guess, pit bull. All right, I don't know what else we can say about that.
I'm just going to mention something else, I just lost it. Oh, we, so right now we're at seven and eight, we're on thus, the, the lag vessel, we, we shut down the lead. Anticipating that we wanted to do the clean out before Memorial Day. It worked out, it came back up online after Memorial Day, but differential pressure is gone. Uh, so we, we actually cleaned that up pretty good, uh, we did the, raised the pH. Over thirteen and. Did that flush over there for that, for the lag vessel, differential pressure issue we're having. I guess, I, I don't know if it would have. It worked out, it, it would have worked out if we waited because of the weather. But it was kind of, we didn't know how the weather was going to turn, so.
Did the demand, you mean?
Demand as far as that goes, we probably could have held on to that lead vessel a little bit longer. And used, used up some of the media, but. With everything support, you know. Supposed to fall into place with the dates we had had, and we, and not knowing how the weather was going to be, opted to shut down. The lead, bring the, the lag online, or do the cleaning on the lag to bring that online. Uh, as to being picked up and.
So both vessels are back in service now, though?
Uh, no, just the.
Just the lag is still?
Just the lag, because the. We didn't want to do the cleaning, because you're going to send it off to get it struck.
Push it back into the lab, yeah.
Kill off that.
Wow, so now we're really just on one vessel, see, their delays are. Kind of screwing us even more.
Make another phone call or, or email, maybe even a phone call and just let it open. That we are on one vessel right now, the, the lag vessel, so.
Okay. Yeah, it's getting, that's critical, be running on just one vessel, too much time goes by and. Could have some more serious breakthrough.
I was thinking from a compliance standpoint.
We can, we could run off one, really. Because we're waiting on a change out, or doing a change out, we just want to have one vessel, but.
Yeah, I thought I heard somebody say that D E S does not require lead lag vessels.
It's a design thing for, to make sure that we had that time to change up and.
So it's a necessity out of the logistics, but not by.
Interesting, this is in Massachusetts, that's for sure, could tell you that.
Yeah, because remember, we originally think we're going to, we're going to need a swing load and.
I know.
Be able, you know, have to keep. Trying it over, but.
But you were saying, maybe we should have.
We had a swing load, we wouldn't be sitting in this position right now, we would have. That media could be sitting in one of their trucks waiting, you know, for their testing to come back.
Stockpile somewhere, yeah.
But we, we need a, a swing load for each.
System.
For all different, different programs, well.
No, we could get the biggest one.
Seven and eight bigger.
Seven and eight's bigger.
We're going to be doing two vessels at a time and this is four over there, two and nine. Yeah. All right, I don't know what this.
Should be. I don't know, this, this, I don't feel like we're in control of this right now. So, is that something you need, like the board commissioners, you know, maybe, you know, to schedule a call with them and. Play, you know, a good cup back of whatnot, I don't know.
I can really, uh, I mean.
Are they the ones that do the sampling to do their own profiles? Because they're waiting on a lab, right?
They're waiting on a lab, so.
So can we pull another sample and send it to an independent lab and get a profile? I, I don't know if that exists or if it's their proprietary lab that has to go through, like, I just.
Or if it's just an excuse.
I didn't ask. I, I didn't ask that question because I'm assuming it was. Something they had to do to. I don't know if they'll accept that.
Right.
Laboratory or. Let me, let me ask that.
I just feel like they're putting us in a bad situation going into the summer.
And I would, I would just.
Not a lag vessel.
I would request to escalate to, to a senior manager, you know, to an executive and, and, I mean, that's what LinkedIn is for too, right? Find it, find the gentlemen's, you know, and the gentleman's, that was German, the gentleman on, on LinkedIn, you know, look, look who they report to or look, look. Look for who has the bigger job title, reach out to them, say, listen, guys, we're not getting the answers we need and we have a public that's, that's at risk here if we don't. Get this going.
I mean, even if they got their testing back tomorrow, you're still looking at a month later than what they gave us from Target.
Right.
Like, that's a lot of time in the middle of summer.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't understand how they were that, that far off to begin with, but.
I don't, stay on them, I guess, you know, if they're blaming the lab. Be nice to hear evidence from the lab to say, yeah, we're behind. You know, I don't know, the lab's probably going to say, I'm not giving you a letter, I don't have time, you know, it's. I don't track the vocal.
Round to Mike, I can follow up, me, and I, I'll send something out this week, I, let me follow up with that.
All right.
Oh, sure, blame the lab.
John, you don't test that stuff, right?
Maybe you should start.
Yeah. He only tests the water, am I already offered to test your water?
All right, well, I guess that's, uh, comes to the end of the superintendent's report. So, um, any questions from Press Republic? You just checked, there's no one on there or? All right, so, um, I guess at this point, you know. Have a motion to adjourn, the next meeting is July seventeenth. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
You sure do.
Sorry, sorry, just quick comment, I will be out of the country July seventeenth, so. Um, uh, I'm going to be on European time zone. The more commissions that are available for July seventeen, the more appreciated.
All right, that's good to know.
Sorry, sorry, John.
All right, John, John, motion to adjourn, I think I heard.
You got it. You got it.
Does anyone want to second that? Who doesn't? Second by Wolf. All those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Hi, John, how do you vote?
Cheers.
And Ken?
Hi.
All right. Thanks for hanging on, everybody. Have a good night and um we'll see you at the next meeting.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
You too, Amanda.
You too.